We probably have just about 30 seconds before the stroke of 7 o'clock. Oh, 7 o'clock. All right. I hereby call this meeting to order of the Leominster School Committee. Today is Monday, February 1st. If everyone can please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. Which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somehow I have to figure out a way for us all to sync because then I'm hearing people at different times and then it throws me off. All right. I just want to make a note that Christine, who is our secretary for the school committee, is not here tonight. So the meeting is being recorded and then she will be able to transcribe the minutes at a later date. I also want to alert if anybody is planning on recording this meeting themselves that you please need to announce yourself at this time. Okay, no one having come forward, we're going to open up. I'm going to read our school committee statement and then we'll open up the public forum. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. Okay, having said that, I'm going to open up the public forum. I'm going to first call on the folks who have signed up ahead of time. And then I will open up to the public if anybody else wishes to address the committee. The first person is Wendy Anderson. If you can please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you are soft, but we do hear you.
Okay, I'm Wendy Anderson. I live at 104 Harrison Street in Leominster, Massachusetts. Oh, you know that, sorry. I got a... Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I hope you're all well and staying warm and healthy. The reason I wanted to speak to you is to hopefully remind the community that we are all supposed to have the same end goal in mind. The best possible education for our children, even if we don't always agree on how to provide that. But we are supposed to be the adults and we are supposed to protect our children, all of them, those that are ours and those that aren't. And it is unacceptable to use someone's child to attack them for having a view or position that you disagree with. Shame on anyone who has no problem with that kind of behavior and shame on anyone participating in that kind of behavior. Our teachers have been doing everything asked of them and then some. Having their union make asks or requests isn't ever a reason to attack individual members of or their leadership. A union is tasked with representing its members, not the general public, like it or not. Maybe the adults who are abusive bullies and who should know better, but clearly don't, are the best argument for returning a true civics class to schools. And I'll close by saying that LCE has been doing an amazing job and I'm so grateful they are still here, the little school that could, given how much they've been through over the years. Thank you, Mr. Vantellet and your entire staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Amy Caton.
Thank you. Amy Caton, 42 Sacramento Drive. My son is in a sub-separate classroom and he went back to school today, which is obviously awesome. But it raises the question of why four days a week? Why not five? I'm not trying to be greedy here, but I really do not see the rationale. And my son needs as much time in front of his teachers and therapists as he can get. So as far as I can ascertain, the reason for four days a week is twofold. To separate cohort groups into A and B for contact tracing reasons and to thoroughly clean the building in between on Wednesdays. But there are holes in this logic. All the sub-separate kids, except for some early education programs, are back in school four days a week, not in cohorts. It's the same kids going Monday and Tuesday as Thursday and Friday. How difficult would it be to clean the programming space and common areas for these few classes daily? So that there's not so much emphasis placed on a thorough Wednesday cleaning and/or most vulnerable kids can receive five days a week of quality in-person education. I know at the beginning of all this, there was a lot of discussion over how custodians shouldn't have to work in the evening hours. While they're sending my kid home at 1:45 PM, so I think there's plenty of time for a thorough daily cleaning. Put some of that nearly $5 million towards hiring more custodial staff. I'm glad that one of my kids is back in school, but my other son is not. He opted to stay remote just so he wouldn't have to deal with hybrid and being pulled in and out of school like a yo-yo. I'm thrilled that there's a plan to bring all levels back into the buildings and hopefully to keep them there. The hybrid is not good enough. Please recognize that education is essential business. Not all kids are getting what they need from remote or hybrid learning. This is not exclusive to sub-separate kids. There are kids on IEPs, kids with attention issues, kids who simply cannot engage remotely. All kids need to be back in school full-time. When will this happen? We need a date. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Fenner is up next.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Fenner. I reside at 18 Manchester Street. First, I want to thank the Superintendent Deacon on her amazing efforts to give families that need in-person learning the opportunity to have some face-to-face with a pivot back to hybrid. As exciting as this is, I want to remind everyone that this is only a start. Our end goal needs to continue all our focus on full in-person learning for the families that desperately need it. With that said, I'm concerned with allocations of funds. With millions of dollars in surplus, the focus of this money should be directed towards any and all actions to get these children back into school full-time. Hearing ideas of arts, crafts, and dance classes being the consumers of the excess funding should be on the backburner. All families need full-week options for basic education. This should take precedent for all other discussions. That's my opinion on the subject matter. I appreciate you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next person up is Frank Cohen.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity again to speak publicly. So the news about vaccines is excellent. As widely reported in all the major dailies and news broadcasts over the past 24 to 48 hours, all five vaccines with public results have eliminated COVID-19 deaths. They have drastically reduced hospitalizations. They're all great trial results. It's great news according to one of the leading epidemiologists putting together these results. Vaccines are already being isolated for their impact on declining positivity rates in communities. So great news on the vaccine front. On the transmission front, we've known all along. We've known for months that young children are less susceptible to serious infection, less likely to transmit the coronavirus. They are the least likely to transmit it to their teachers and their peers. It has been repeatedly replicated conclusions of a waterfall of research from around the world over the past six months, including among most of the top 10 epidemiological studies of transmission among and by children. So now is the time to begin preparations for a full-time, five-day-week reopening of academics in the fall. The calendar and scheduling for transportation and full days of classes should be in place. Anything short of an official plan for a normal in-person school year next fall is completely unacceptable. If you want to have remote backups for emergencies, that's sensible contingency planning. But remote days and scheduling should be strictly emergency backup. Please give us a date for a full reopening. Do not put this off. We will keep pushing and campaigning for a date. Give us a date, please. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes everyone who has signed up previously. If anybody else in the community wishes to address the committee, can you please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record?
Bonnie Bud, 321 Prospect Street.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I'm very appreciative of the efforts to get all the kids back in the building. And looking online at the Desi profiles for the Leominster School District, I was primarily concerned about the attendance rates and was happy to see this year, you know, we're doing a pretty good job. Then stumbled upon the 2019-2020 Student Discipline Data Report, All Offenses. And I started with Leominster High School. And I'd like to know what is being done to address the high number of in-school suspensions for our most vulnerable students. Students with disabilities at Leominster High School alone, out of 162, 42 were disciplined at a rate of 22.8% in-school suspension, out-of-school 13%. High needs, 601 students, 124 were disciplined, 18.6% had in-school suspension, 7.8 had out-of-school suspension. We know that our kids are going to need all hands on deck for the social-emotional needs. And if we were failing the report card yes last year, what are we doing this year? Who is this data accountable to? I don't think I've ever heard it addressed at school committee meetings. And I urge you, please take a look at these profiles and address them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Rob Volpe, 20 Sheilane.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. The recent decision to bring the kids back into hybrid format is progress towards a very low bar. Is this where we are? Goals so low that the community will just take anything at this point. My answer to the school department is no. Mediocre or just okay does not meet the expectations that our children deserve. Our teachers are doing their best. They are not failing our kids. You're asking the impossible from our kids and our teachers. There is a purely imaginary conflict of parents versus teachers. Everything was fine between parents and teachers until this committee failed to take a proactive leadership role in opening the school safely. We have a minority of members whose hearts are in the right place as retains essential business in schools. They are not a fault. You want to open the doors, we don't even know who wants to come back. Let me allow me to leave you with this. Set a goal. Set a date to return. We want a date.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself now.
Caitlin Volpe, 20 Sheilane. Thank you Superintendent Deacon for your leadership and finally getting these kids back to school. They need it badly and hybrid is a step in the right direction. However, we still have a lot of work to do. Being in school twice a week is just not enough in so many ways. Tonight, I want to talk about socialization. These kids need socialization. Socialization does not require kids to touch each other. It requires kids to be around other kids their own age to talk about kid stuff and to see how other kids react to certain situations. This is how they learn. Kids need kid time, just like adults need adult time. They support each other and teach each other in preparation for real-life situations. Kids get depressed when they don't get time with other kids their own age. They should be allowed to play fun activities together in school that don't require contact. Do you know that my six-year-old does not know what it is like to have friends his own age? He has not had a full year of school as his kindergarten year got cut at the end. The only social life that he has is his nine-year-old brother and his friends. He doesn't know what it's like to have a six-year-old conversation. I am not asking for babysitters. I am asking for my children to get the same quality education and socialization that I was able to get. They deserve it and it is their right. Give us a date for a full return.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Would anybody like to address the committee? Please do so now. And one final last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself now. Having no one come forward, we're going to close that portion of our meeting. We're going to move on to communications. I do want to note that we received late this afternoon a communication from the mayor, which will, you know, obviously be in everyone's, you know, in part of the minutes and part of our packets. So we appreciate that, Dean, and I know possibly because our secretary is out that got to us late today. Is this communication? Any other communication, Superintendent? There is not. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report then. Thank you. So happy February. I don't know where January went, but I do know that Mother Nature just showed up. Her timing, horrible. We were so looking forward to having a smooth transition in today. We opened up for all our sub-separates at all of the levels. So I looked out the window at 6:00 AM. We were still good. So we rallied on and we had a full day today. And within the buildings, it was such heartfelt feelings, watching the students come in, seeing the teachers. There was a lot of elbow touches, but students fell right back where they were when they left in November. They knew the routines. They came in. They saw their teachers. They knew how to greet them. There's just a vibe when we know that we have students back in our building. So we felt really good about that. With that being said, those exact same students will be in a remote setting tomorrow. The snow is really piling up and we're not going to take any chances. So our district on February 2nd, Tuesday, will be a full remote learning day. And we will come back on Thursday, February 4th, with the reintroduction of all CTI and our LCE students. So we're moving at a much more accelerated rate. Next Monday, we will have K through 2 students in and then there is a week off. February 15th through the 19th is school vacation week for students. Then the following Monday, on the 22nd, pre-K through high school. Now, the most important part is for parents to really tune into their communications from their specific schools. Dates, times, expectations, all of that, it's different for each school. So I'm just giving a general statement, but your principals will be reaching out to say what time drop-off is or pickup. With that being said, there are two things that we really need families to help us out on. One is a non-negotiable and one is a we really need you. The first one is around busing and transportation. If you're a family that it, you don't have to transport on a bus because the bus company is still, they have guidance all around them. And perhaps 20 students to a bus. We have a fairly large ridership. So if families can bring their children to and from school, it would be better than sending buses on repeated routes and swinging back and swinging back, especially in these cold temperatures. So if you don't need, if you positively don't need bus transportation, please help us out on that end. We want to make sure that everybody has access to our buildings and if they really need a bus. And that's the only thing that they have, that they have that access. The other piece is if you or your child or your family has any symptoms and you don't know whether your child can come to school, should come to school, you can contact your building nurse or you can look at our website or any CDC website to see what symptomatic components are that you should not send your child. Our goal is we are not looking backwards. We want our schools to stay open. We want to get to the full return if everything aligns. And we will have a very brief health update from Kathy Gaudette. She's double-booked herself this evening, so she's just going to speak to us quickly. But we're in really good shape. But if you have any symptoms, please stay home. We'll get your support, whatever it's going to take. We want our buildings to stay open. And lastly, I want to thank our parents. Last weekend, we had parent conferences across the district. We had an outstanding showing. It was the highest participation rate that we've ever had. And parents could be at work and take a 15-minute conference. They could be in their car, on their phone. They were at home, the comfort level, and really teachers were so flexible about the meeting times. Some of our buildings were over 90% in communicating with families. And it's so important because those are when those important conversations could happen. And if parents said that they felt better in a more private setting, if you can think about the internet as being private setting. So it's probably one of the efficiencies that we've learned this year and we'll probably use that moving forward. But parents were also celebrating the way we've handled not just the academics and the progress that students have made and what everybody's learned, they themselves too. They celebrated that their children had been invited into a sport or some club or a celebration. And they really appreciated everybody's effort. So I think it was something that teachers needed to hear and to have that connection, another connection. So this is for my seniors. I'm sorry, there is not a snow day tomorrow. It doesn't say I'm not ever going to call one. But you'll be happy to know that progress towards getting graduation on June 5th, ready to go, that's where our heads are at. So you want us to keep coming to work right now because we want to get graduation to be one of the best we've ever had. So stay tuned, everybody, and please stay connected. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. We're going to move on to presentations and discussions. So we have a teacher feature, I believe? Oh, this will be great. Okay, Andrea, I'm just going to say, so the master of the feature. I know. I just, she's a love. She's a bright spot. If I had any God-given talent, I would have been a part of her program. So go ahead, Andrea. You're brilliant. That's all I have to say. Sorry.
Hi, everyone. Before I just start this presentation, I just want to say that as a group, the Fine Arts Faculty this year really committed to try to keep the arts alive in Leominster however we could. And we're just all so extremely appreciative of our administrators for supporting us in that. As we navigate our way through this pandemic, it's been very interesting trying to do what we do online. But I'm here to share what is going on in theater and music and art right now in schools. So I'm going to try to share my slideshow from here. And if it doesn't work, then Steve Mamon is going to share it for me. So let me just try my best and see. Usually I have to leave and then come back.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Did it work? I can see it. Yes. Okay.
Yes, it did.
Okay, wonderful. So our Fine Arts Update, how are we keeping the arts alive during the pandemic? Okay, unfortunately, it's not letting me. Wow, okay.
I think Steve's doing it for you.
Oh, Steve's doing it even better. Oh, I love it. Okay, great. Then I can just talk. Except now I can't see. Oh, no. Okay, well, I'm just going to read my slides and I can't see you anymore, but that's okay. So in theater, so we started the year with our interclass plays. We streamed those online in November. Each class did a 20-minute play. So the freshmen, the sophomores, the juniors, the seniors, and the faculty all did one. And that went really well and we learned a lot from that. The Leominster High School Theater Company has been having weekly meetings where we check in with the kids. We participate in monthly theatrical contests across the state. We've been offering audition workshops and we've been coaching the seniors for their college auditions, which are all completely virtual this year, which has been another interesting hurdle. Third, we are currently in rehearsal for our all-school play. And for this one this year, normally we do this at the end of the year, but for this one this year, the seniors have written four different 10-minute plays for the underclassmen to perform. And that will be Act 1 of the all-school play. And then for Act 2, our seniors participated in a week of interviews. We really wanted to give them a voice of what they've been going through. So we held interviews answering questions about their senior year during a pandemic. And we ended up creating a piece of verbatim theater using their words to create a script. And one of our seniors, Abby Waterhouse, wrote five original songs. And we have turned this now into an original 40-minute musical. And Emily Beckholt and Lindsay Bergeron, two more seniors, have choreographed and taught all the dances. So we're very excited to stream this piece at the end of February. Tickets will be available soon on our website, which is www.lhstc.com. And then moving on, the musical, we are so excited to announce our musical this year. We will be presenting Bright Star. It's a musical written by Steve Martin and Edie Raquel. It's a story that's mired in heartbreak and tragedy, but yet still ultimately enveloped in hope, triumph, and love, which we thought would really be perfect for this year. And we will be streaming this production in May. And then for the music part and the visual arts, in the LHS Music Department, students have been rehearsing online through Google Meet. The LHS Marching and Concert Band rehearsed Tuesday and Wednesday nights. Chorus rehearsals on Thursday afternoons. Both groups are preparing for a virtual iceball performance to be released in March. And then we have plans as the Fine Arts at the high school. We last year did a night called Devil in the House. And we've been discussing doing that again, but turning it into a virtual coffee house featuring student artwork, poetry, short theatrical performances, and musical solo and duet performances to be streamed in late April or early May. For middle school music at St. Seid, Mr. Landry has started offering instrumental lessons on Thursday afternoons. And Mrs. Lemay will be starting chorus rehearsals soon. And we are also looking to restart band and chorus at the elementary level soon. They're trying to work out some scheduling issues. But so as you can see, we have a lot going on that we're very excited about.
Andrea, that is incredible. When Arthur Pierce sends these proposals, and if all of you know Arthur, he's very thorough and he does not miss a single detail. So he kept asking us, can we please have chorus? Can we have a theater production? We were still learning this platform like everyone else. And finally, I said, if you guys can pull this off and still stay within the guidance, the students have been having so much fun. It's been an absolute blessing. So I thank your team 200% for bringing some levity. I know the Bible House is suffering through some of this at the current moment. Yep. But the kids are loving it. And it's just, it's keeping the connection going. So thank you. And please make sure all your members know they're so appreciated.
Oh, definitely. We will.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Our next presentation is the update on the Health Matrix. Kathy, are you on?
I am.
Okay, so I would just like to ask everyone, Kathy has another, she's got a scheduling conflict. So if you have any questions for her, if you could just send those through me, I will make sure they get to Kathy and I will give them back to the committee. I just want to honor her time and what she needs to take care of. But I did ask for just sort of an overall update. Kathy and I talk seven days a week, so go ahead, Kath.
Hi. Yeah, so we have been working really hard at trying to plan for weekly testing for the staff. It's going to be PCR testing. We are hoping to be able to have everything started right after February vacation if everything works in alignment. In regards to immunizations, we're still in the planning. It's really hard. It's, nobody is getting large volumes of vaccines. So, but we're still working on it. I have been sending people that meet the criteria right now for Phase 1, having them sign up Hannah Firds and Leominster and Lancaster Street and Health Alliance. I wish we had more. We're doing the best we can. Let's see, our numbers have gone down and I'm hoping, I expect them to go down again this week as well. Three weeks ago, we were 14.15% for our positive, and I can't even think right now. But anyways, now we're 9.83% for our percent positivity. There it is. So it is going down and we are very excited about that. We're very happy to have the kids back in school. And everyone, you're doing a great job. We couldn't do it without the community. And thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy has been working nonstop. So all your efforts, she lives on the phone, trying to talk to different outsources that can help us with COVID testing, vaccination, you name it. So if anybody has questions that you would like to field through Kathy, like I said, I just feel them through myself and I will get them to her and back to you. um, like I said, I just just field them through myself, and I will get them to her and back to you as soon as possible. So thank you, Kathy, for everything that you're doing for us and keeping us informed. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy, for all your work. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. So next up is the principal presentations.
Yes, this evening. We haven't heard much, you know, the high school, you know, we have to understand, we have three high schools on one campus now. So um, it's been a while since we've heard what's going on. When you drive by, it seems like such a quiet place right now, and um, if you if you've been there during a typical day, it's not that normally. But when you know what's going on inside, it's amazing the amount of work that's getting pushed out to our students. So I wanted to give each one of them, uh, Mr. Baysham, Mr. Van Stilet, and Mr. Dobzinski, an opportunity to let everybody know what is going on with over eighteen hundred of our high school students. Gentlemen.
Who would you like to go first?
Uh, I'm thinking we'll have Mr. Baysham. Does he start it first? Sort of? John, start.
Yeah, I'm live. I'm right here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Deacon, School Committee. Uh, nice to see you all. Um, hopefully in person soon. CTE has been very, very busy, uh, preparing for reopening to hybrid learning. And just like uh, many of you, we're hoping to get back to full time, regular instruction at some point this year. Fingers crossed. Currently, we are planning on, as Paula indicated earlier, opening up Thursday. This Thursday, our sophomores and our seniors will begin. We split our schedule into um, an A week, B week schedule. So A week, which is what we're currently in. Our sophomores are remote at from seven thirty to nine thirty in the morning. And then our seniors are remote from um, ten thirty to two fifteen in the afternoon. Starting Thursday, we will be bringing both of those groups in for in-person learning. And we're really excited to have them back, and I think the staff is as well. And I know the students and parents are. So we're really excited about that. And then the following week, next week, uh, February eighth through the twelfth will be our B week. And during B week, we have all of our freshmen, two hundred and fifty plus freshmen, from seven thirty in the morning till nine thirty in the morning, followed by our junior class in-person instruction from ten thirty in the morning to two fifteen. I can't, I can't say enough about the um, the work of Chatwells as well. Bob Burr and his staff, amazing. Uh, he provides a breakfast for every student. When they walk through the door, there's a brown bag breakfast that they grab, take with them right to the shop after they turn in their attestation form. And after, and as long as they have their mask, those are their entry tickets to get in the building and to participate. And they grab that breakfast and go right to the shop, and they eat their breakfast, and then they get ready to work. And at nine thirty, when the freshmen and the sophomores are leaving the building, he has a brown bag lunch for them to take with him to go home. Uh, and then at ten thirty, in comes our upperclassmen. A week, it's the seniors. B week, the juniors. Same thing. They grab a lunch on the way in, they eat their lunch. And then on the way out, um, they ju- they just go home at two fifteen. We're we're not really providing supper. But uh, we're really excited to have these kids back in, really looking forward to it. Our freshman is uh, is a very important class to us because we haven't uh, we haven't captivated them enough to have them be part of the program yet. So having them back to in-person, giving the teachers the opportunity to show them and demonstrate with them what their uh, career paths look like in their particular trades is really important to opening their minds and their eyes and giving them an opportunity to make a decision as to um, as to what what they want to do for a possible career and what what avenue they would like to choose to to further their education in. So we're really looking forward to uh, getting everybody back, and can't wait.
Does anybody, thank you very much, Dan. Does anybody from the committee have any questions regarding um, CTEI?
This is Dean. I I have just one thing.
Go ahead, Dean.
Hi, Dean.
Very exciting, very exciting on the um, on the arts, very exciting for kids to be heading back to school, very exciting for CTE. I just think that one thing I wanted to to mention to you uh, for CTEI is that um, I'm the elected lead elected official for the workforce development. And um, recently, a system-wide, county-wide uh, evaluation was done and survey on the um, available resources for home healthcare training. And I see that as a real opportunity for our students, but not just our students, but other students in North Worcester County, that um, that field obviously now especially highlighted during COVID nineteen is really an emerging field. It's so many different pieces of it, and I know we run a program and have a very good relationship with nursing homes, assisted living, hospital, Health Alliance, Reliant. And um, I think this is our opportunity to really establish it and um, possibly be the lead community to sort of lead up these efforts for um, a system-wide training. So that um, this is such an emerging business. We have several companies in town um, offering home healthcare uh, in the industry. I don't see this slowing down at all uh, with telehealth. I don't see it slowing down when uh, vaccine is effective. And we've made it through the uh, COVID nineteen. I I continue to see this as a a growing industry. So this is exciting, and I think we have the resources and the knowledge to really put this together, to uh, put something together that brings everybody together in the county for um, a system-wide, county-wide, North Worcester County-wide uh, training program.
I I couldn't agree more, Dean, and we are in communications with the uh, North Worcester County Workforce Development Board. Um, we've been involved with that since you had everybody down to uh, to uh, City Hall last year. And so we we reach out to each other, we communicate back and forth, and we agree with you a hundred percent. We've got a great health occupation program with Sue Phelps and Gene Ordway, and uh, we're going to keep working in that direction.
And I love the picture behind you, both of them.
I've been, I've been actually doing that for the last year and a month, I think. Praying for the return.
I love it. I love it.
Uh, thanks a lot.
Well, thank you to you and your whole team.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody else from the committee have any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, we spoke before about making sure that um, the um, we're worried about getting enough shop hours for the certificates for CTEI. And so we had a plan for that. Um, I'm assuming that that's been affected somewhat by the remote time we've just had. So I just wanted to ask about plans for catching up or making sure that they get the required hours in between now and the end of the year.
Uh, yes, it has been affected, and the state is also aware of that. And we are working with the state, with the Mass Vocational Administrators Association, and um, the Commissioner of Education and so forth, constantly refine those hours and and make some adjustments where necessary to make sure we're not penalizing kids uh, for something that was out of their control. You know what I'm saying? So we're working with that board, and we're also uh, focusing on three particular vocational areas right now where those shop hours are required for certain certifications that they need. Those areas are plumbing, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, refrigeration, and electrical program. Those hours are critical towards their licensure in in those particular trades.
Right.
The other programs, those shop hours are more of a uh, like the equivalency of a credit, earned credit, to make sure that they're uh, given a certificate in that specific field of study. So we're working with MAVA, with the state, and uh, we're going to do our best to make sure that our kids don't get punished and they don't uh, end up being behind. We'll do the best we can to catch them all up. We also, I want to say that we have a co-op program. Our Assistant Principal, Russi Star, is overseeing the co-op education program. Um, and the state has allowed us to put juniors out earlier than ever before as a result of COVID nineteen. Get them out, get them more experienced, more hands-on, so that even though they might have been remote learning from a school perspective, there are many students that have been out and working on a cooperative education placement, getting hands-on training on the job. And those uh, those jobs are a little bit more difficult to uh, place kids in now because of the COVID requirements. They have to meet certain guidelines in order for us to be able to place the kids. But Russ has been doing a great job with that, and uh, I I think we're, I think we're on the right track.
Thank you.
No problem.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we're gonna move right along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
And I I just want you to know that Dan has had students in almost every single day, um, small groups, doing their projects, however he's had to do it. So I, he's been advocating to having his students back and has done a tremendous job. So thank you, Dan. Um, Dr. Dobzinski, why don't you go next?
Much enthusiasm in that handoff, Doctor Superintendent Deacon. Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna go quick. We got a lot. When I tell you that, yes, the walls are bouncing, um, last March twelfth, I gotta call it, wrote one thirty, that said, uh, prepare your teachers to go two weeks remote. That two weeks has been the longest two weeks of our lives, and here we are. Um, I just need to tell you, I have, we as a district, and I hope there are a lot of parents listening, have the hardest working teachers in the state of Massachusetts, those that commit every day. Um, this year, Leominster High School has been open for business every day, um, whether it be remotely or in person. But those teachers have met with every class every day since the beginning of the year. Um, and through the efforts of David Baysham, Michelle Oliveri, Barry Hudson, Jane Sidlow, and Julie Giannunzio have given out um, more work permits, more answers, more more calls, more questions. Um, but our faculty is second to none, and I just want to stand with them and say thank you to everything they've done. So through the efforts of which NATO and the mayor's office and City Hall and the superintendent of schools to get our PPEs and everything else, uh, HVAC systems up and going, we're open and ready to go. Um, school nurses Bonnie Kackler and Katrina Kucha have been working with Kathy Goddett tirelessly twenty-four hours a day to ensure the protocol and the safeties are in place. We had a great group back today, and when I tell you that lunch was the most fun I've ever had with um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna give a little shout out to Michael Tony Brothers who came in today. Uh, we had a ball and throughout the day, and so it was great to see everybody back. And that was really through a Herculean effort from Kim Woodford, Laura Van Dorn, and Colleen Tucker at the high school. A couple of student highlights from the past few months. Carter Kowalski, who, while the rest of us were cleaning out our closet for the thirteenth time or fourteenth time, wrote a book entitled, Wrote a Book, and it's published, you can get it on Amazon, an iPhone guide for your grandparents, and I have secured a copy for Ronnie Hull. So um, just want to make sure we shout out. Carter Lawrence, hopefully many of you have seen the um, article that we sent out last week, was the youngest student ever accepted to the UMass Lowell uh, dual enrollment program. And that's just a huge tribute to the city, the community, and his family. So congratulations to Carter. Chris Kine, a teacher of ours and a part-time sports writer, has been doing weekly little columns on highlighting our student athletes. He's now delved into some alums. So um, if you have any ideas, you got somebody out there that you'd like to highlight? And I think it's pretty amazing in our community right now that the mayor, the fire chief, the head of DPW, these are all Leominster people. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to go out and make these great Mark Dagnall-like jobs coaching the NVA. You can keep it right in this community, it'd be great. Um, you obviously heard from Andrea Mastriani, and she was a little bit um, modest. What she does year in and year out, regardless of the talent pool, regardless of who's there, and Isabella, you're shaking your head because you know. To Emma Waterhouse, Reagan Boulay, Celia Lowman, and Abby Waterhouse, who just got some state recognition, congratulations. A shout out to our student council under Ben Joseph, who through the efforts combined with Fitchburg Student Council this year raised over twelve thousand dollars, and it kept rolling in post Thanksgiving. So we were not only able to help families around Thanksgiving, um, they allowed me to play Santa and deliver some stuff around the holidays at Christmas, and it was great. It's, there's no better system than that. Last week, we had about over a hundred students come and take the PSATs. Uh, we focused on our juniors for spacing purposes and social distancing purposes, but I want to thank the students that came in. It was great, without a hitch, no glitch. Um, thank you to Annie Olilup and Megan Deana Centis for leading that. Um, also, I don't want to over, uh, I I don't want to underestimate what Superintendent Deacon and uh, Mayor Masorella have done with the hotspots and the Chromebooks and the ability for us to continue that when we've had to go remote, and we all obviously have in virtual, and through the efforts of the high school specifically, shout out to Steve Mamon and Jody Winters for their efforts. I don't think people have any idea. It even now, we're getting calls every day. I need a hotspot. I need a Chromebook. Okay, and it's still going on. That was not a one-shot deal. Dr. Julio de Carvallo is a Spanish teacher, is hosting a Fulbright scholar again at UMass Lowell. Teacher is coming from Mozambique this year. Um, he'll be meeting with us virtually, but he'll be on the campus of UMass Lowell. Only thirteen or twelve, excuse me, are coming to the United States this year through Fulbright, and we're getting one of them. So I want to thank Dr. De- de Carvallo. Athletic League, and I know this is a little controversial because the academic athletic piece, but the socio-emotional piece has really outweighed all of this for us. Uh, we've had a successful fall athletic season. Thank you to Coach Palazzi and Robin Koweski and the athletic office and all of our coaches. We are having a very good um, winter and the pods and the protocols and everything's in place. I also want to have a shout out to a group of faculty led by Michelle Oliveri, Barry Hudson, Catherine Bro, Shelley Saban, Renee Rahm, Hani, Claudia Nunes, and a group of students who came in and are painting the doors, and I'll just say it is electric blue. It is blue, if you've ever seen blue. Um, and word walls and devils everywhere. And we're gonna ask for some volunteers maybe to come in over Fed break. So if you got nothing to do with it, good with the paintbrush, come on in. As you heard, music lessons and vocal courses are going. It is Black uh, History Month, and our Black Heritage Club will be doing some celebrating. It's usually one of the great nights of the year. Um, our our gala, and obviously we can't have it in person this year, but led by Tracy Perkins, we will be going. You mentioned conferences are going. I don't want to um, forget Stephen Kahi, who runs our alternative ed program. And this year is bigger and better than ever for a lot of kids that just need a flexible schedule um, and a little bit more support than the traditional is happening us. Moving forward, great curriculum work going through, through Ellen Bernard. We're kind of revising our English curriculum a little bit and getting away from a standard junior English or senior English course. We're still gonna have it, but we're gonna have some themed courses. Um, still meeting the state guidelines and standards um, through maybe, but focused on poetry in one particular course throughout the year. Also, Lynn Spileios, Colin Davis, and Leah Burns have been collaborating and getting together for the uh, they teach CTEI academics, and they will be hopefully grouping and doing some cross-cultural and cross um, collaboration this year. Social Studies Department is aligning with the new state mandate around the civics component. So thank you to Darryl Robichon, Larissa Murphy for taking that lead. We're involved in the Bar Foundation through a grant at Mamachusa Community College. Thank you to Michelle Oliveri, Tim Smith, Shelley Saban for taking that lead. Renee Koska has great new friends at the high school, the ELL department, and has taken on that. So thank you. Mrs. Koska and our lead ELL population. School council is meeting tomorrow night, and I have a record number of people signing up, so I think virtually is really the way to go. Um, we'll be talking about a lot of our senior activities, the budget, the needs, where we are, how successful our conferences. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the guided staff, school adjustment counselors, and our deans for reaching out. Um, I know moving quick, but the mental health that was raised um, a couple meetings ago is no secret to us. We know those people are used daily and are on the phone and have an unbelievable connection to our community. I do just want to thank uh, Lorraine Supola for leading our book study group throughout our administration through the district. We are reading uh, a great book focused on equity, and it's pertinent as it's not only a district goal, but it's a goal at the high school, it's a personal goal as well. I also want to give a quick shout out to the Lynch Academy at BC, where the administrators are also. And a very special thank you to my mentor, Dr. James Riley, who I think is often goes flying beneath the radar um, in the district. So yes, we're remote, finalizing our plan to return, and parents, you'll be getting it tomorrow Wednesday. Um, but we're still educating our students, involved in this community, and thankful for the partnership we have. And it's going on every day, every hour from seven twenty to two thirty-five, and that's all. Van Select, baby, you're up. Oh, sorry.
Before he starts, I just want to uh, see if anybody has any questions for Steve regarding the high school.
Well, I uh, I just.
Go ahead, Ron, and then Melissa.
I just think he's doing a very good job, uh, very exuberant, spot on with the task. Yeah, I'll look, I'll, I can't wait to read the book. But uh, I'm impressed. It's uh, it's been an epiphany for the school. I'm very, I'm I'm impressed.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
So just clarifying, parents will hopefully get schedules this week. And if we, can you give us a hint?
can you give us a hint about hours? Will hours be the same?
Hours are gonna stay the same. Yeah, yeah, it's no secret. And you know what? It'll be a tiered return. We'll talk about it. I know, I saw you signed up for school council tomorrow night, and so it'll be a tiered return with hopefully quick growth.
Does anybody else from the committee have any questions? Okay, then we're, last but not least, if you wanna go ahead, John?
Thank you. Steve is a tough act to follow. I just want to reflect what Steve Campbell said about the cafeteria staff, the technology staff, I mean, all our needs and our needs have been, haven't met, are known. It's been really a great team effort all across the board. We are ready to open Thursday, February 4th. We have about just under half of our students choosing to return to the building. The rest of them are staying remote by choice. We have about 23 students, which is a little over half, that have active internships. Three of them are on a bit of a break due to COVID, the internship site's taking a bit of a break, but other than that, they're all, they're all in business. We also have three other students with substantial leads on internships. We are gonna run Mondays and Thursdays, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For all students in that, Tuesdays and Fridays, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for those students that don't have active internships. Classrooms are all set up, sanitization stations are ready to go. We now have air purifiers in every room, which I'm very grateful for. Of course, masks, distancing, the attestation forms. Our teachers, our sports staff, our advisors are all ready to go. Students are ready to get back in there, and you know, we're just, we're just preparing to get started again.
Yes, thank you, John. Thank you. Does anybody else from the committee have any questions for him? All right, having none, thank you very much, gentlemen. It sounds like there's a lot of exciting things going on at the high school and all of our various programs, and I see Paula's raising her hand.
Yes, just, each one of the principals brought up a very essential point. They talked about a form. This is the health form, that it will be going virtual in another week or two, but if you still have a paper copy, it is essential that you bring that every single day. You can download it, do whatever, until we can get it put on people's phones or on their computers. We wanna make sure that we're not having that conversation at the door. We do keep extras at the door, but if families could fill that out, it's just part of the process so that we can ensure a healthy environment once students come into the building. So please fill out those forms every single day.
Great, thank you. So now we'll move on to subcommittee reports, the policy subcommittee, Ron?
Yeah, we had no policy meeting today.
Yeah, we'll have it after our next meeting.
One will be in the month of March, I believe.
All right. And finance subcommittee? I know you met tonight.
We met tonight. We also met last Wednesday. We have a little bit of business to take care of. We have some warrants, first of all. From the general fund, we have warrant 29 totaling $1,853,266.37, and warrant 30 totaling $321,861.43. From grants and revolving, we have warrant 29 totaling $226,493.20, and warrant 30 totaling $211,550.70. Finance reviewed these and recommended approving them, so I make a motion that we approve these warrants as red.
I'll second. All right, this is gonna be a voice vote. If anybody has any questions before we take the vote, now's the time. Otherwise, we'll go ahead. Brandon?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries?
The second bit of business is, we brought up last time, the revised budget for this fiscal year. There were some questions raised, and so we tabled it to this time. In the meantime, we've made a cup, one small change to the numbers and added some information to hopefully answer questions. So we reviewed this again, both Wednesday and tonight, and I would make a motion that we approve the revised budget as you pound in the packet. It has a total of $49,331,000 in wages and salaries, $26,209 expenses, for a total budget of $75,540,670. This matches the money that has been appropriated to the general fund, as is required, and with the anticipated 6.2 million roughly in indirect charges, it's a little bit over the net school spending required. Unlike last time, this time we unanimously recommend approving the summary with the supporting attached, supporting attachments. And so I make a motion that we adopt this as our revised budget for this fiscal.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Sue. Anybody have any questions or comments before we take a vote? All right, we'll take a voice vote. Brandon?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
Ronnie?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I know you guys worked really hard on making sure that everybody, everything, all the numbers aligned, so we appreciate everyone's hard work, including Melanie.
Yes, there was quite a lot of work that went into this. Finance will be meeting again. We've scheduled next Wednesday at 5:30 to continue beginning the budget discussion for FY '22. I think that's all the I have from finance.
All right, thank you very much. Superintendent, do we have any action items tonight?
We do not.
Okay, then at this point, we're gonna move on to new and old business. The one piece of new business I wanted, it's not new, it's old, but I just wanted to remind the community that we are still providing food. Chart Wells has been doing a wonderful job, and families are able to access meals three days, pick up three days a week, but it encompasses breakfast and lunch for seven days a week.
Correct.
So I just wanna make sure that families are aware that that still exists, and please take advantage of it. I know they're putting out probably thousands of meals, but we really appreciate it, and it certainly is a wonderful service for our community. Does anybody else have anything else under new or old business? Isabel, and then Peter?
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and this is an announcement, I guess. I know nomination papers are out at the city clerk's office for anyone interested in running for elected office in the city. And so I just wanted to say I am not seeking reelection this year for my position as Ward III school committee member. I know this is an interesting year, and I know many will view it as someone running away from competition or can't handle the negative comments they've received, but that's not why. I've decided this a long time ago. Ever since I started this committee, I have had many, many hats. I've been spreading myself very, very thin. And so this summer, I am pursuing my master's degree, and so that's partly why I won't be seeking reelection this year to continue my education and hopefully take some, some burden off my shoulders. It's been a wonderful experience, and I'm sure I'll have, I'll have more to share come my last meeting, but thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. You will be missed. Peter, I think you had your hand raised?
Yeah, it just does matter of public interest, particularly for residents of Ward IV. I also wanted to announce, I'm not seeking a second term. Obviously, this isn't goodbye, still have to finish this first term. I just feel that I can serve a little different role at this time, so I'm encouraging any, you know, Ward IV residents to, you know, please consider taking the position.
Thank you, and you will also be missed. Dean, did you have an announcement? Go ahead.
I did. So there was an appropriation that I was, that came across my desk for, to hire somebody to do an audit on the athletic school activities fund, I believe is what it was. And I believe it was, I don't have it in front of me here, I can grab it, but it was for like $50,000. Unless, so I looked through the budget, if that's not something that's in the budget, like appropriated for it, so in other words, during the course of the year, we put that in as appropriation, then that needs a school committee vote. That is a, that is an appropriation that is required, requires a vote of the school committee. And we pay, and what's unusual is, for the whole city, schools, all city departments, we pay about $80,000 for our audits. This one account, to look at these one specific accounts, is like $50,000. I think that needs to be communicated to the public, we're not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, but that is something that I think is important enough to be on the agenda for us to vote on. Plus, I believe it's required.
Dean, can you clarify for me, since I haven't seen the appropriation? Is this for the revolving account for athletics, or is this, it's not the, like the?
No, it's student activity.
The student act, so it's student activity money?
Well, student activity accounts, but I thought we had an audit. Now, Melanie said that she went back to Lansing and Heath, and they said they never audited, but I know we paid for procedures for the student activity account, and I guess no one knows where they are, but I thought it was a lot of money as well. We paid for audits, you know, internal control audits, whatever, but I, I agree with you, Dean.
Melanie, can you shed some light?
I'm not suggesting that we don't have an audit, what I'm trying, and, and, because I don't know enough about it, what the reason is, I'm sure Melanie will explain it, but what I'm saying is, this requires a vote of the school committee. This should be something that's on the, on the agenda so that this is transparent to the public, so they can see exactly what it is, you know, that we're conducting business. We have a whole lot of other things on the agenda. This is something that's really important. $50,000 is a lot of money.
Dean, let's, let Steve, Melanie, can you shed some light?
Hi, good evening. It's, first and foremost, it's not for an appropriation. We're not asking the city for an appropriation. It was a contract that we sent over to get a city purchase order. So it just required Dean's signature, I guess, as all contracts do, so I just wanna make sure that's clear. Secondly, we are getting a contract for up to $50,000. It doesn't mean that we're gonna use the whole $50,000. It just means that if we find something and it needs to go, you know, be approached further, then we will have the contract, and there will be enough there to address the situation.
Okay, was that, I looked through the entire school budget. I did not find a line item for $50,000 for, for an audit. Therefore, it is required that it's an appropriation. So the appropriation requires a vote of the school committee. I signed it conditional upon the school committee voting this, so that it's a public, so that there's disclosure, and the public understands what it is. We have other things on our agenda every single meeting, and I think this is relevant and important. This is something we ought to communicate.
Understood.
And I believe it's an appropriation beyond, it's an appropriation beyond our regular budget, and you may be taking out of the budget, but there's no line item for $50,000 in our budget for an audit.
There are line items in there to do contractual services, and so that's where we're taking it from.
Okay, well, I signed it with the condition that the school committee voted on it, so.
Sue, but I don't think we typically vote on it. How do I wanna say it? I, I get what you're saying. You are feeling like it's appropriation, but it's not appropriation, and it's something that is already within our budget. And we're just drawing out of that line item with, which is contracts. You sign all the contracts, but we, that's not something that we as a committee vote on.
Well, you could say anything as a contract. I think this is important. We spend $80,000 a year on a total audit for all city departments. This one audit could be as much as $50,000. I feel it necessary to say that I'd sign it as a contract, but it would need a vote of the school committee. I see no reason at all why it shouldn't be on our agenda, and we shouldn't vote on it. I see none.
So Melanie, when do you need this to be done? Because I guess I'm not prepared to vote on something tonight. I haven't seen it, so I would not be voting on it. And I think, Dean, you can agree to that, because you're a stickler for that yourself. But is this a time-sensitive matter?
No, we can certainly wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, so we can wait till the next meeting and to get some more information and clarification on it when our decision-making. Ron?
Yeah, in the same vein of thought, could you run that by the, the attorneys? To see if it's necessary for us to vote on it? If it's, if it's been done before, if it's been done before, where is it? You know, just to see what the attorneys tell us. Simple as that.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this issue?
I do, Eileen. We talked about this, we talked about this at the finance subcommittee. I do think Dean is right, that this does need to be approved. This is not an educational expense. This is a, an expense over and above a financial expense. We've always approved audits in the past. My issue is, is this, has this audit been done? Are there procedures? Are we trying to accomplish the same thing that we've already paid for? That's my issue. And I just expressed my concern, or my frustration, that it seems like we pay for things and then they disappear when a new administration comes in. I, you know, it's frustrating, and I think that's what the public needs to know. That's it.
So I guess it would be helpful in, in our packet to have some information about when you think things were ordered, Sue, and done, just so we have some clarification on the timeline as well.
Right, and I know some of it was done around the time of the athletic audit, which that was something I requested, and nothing's been brought forth on that as well. That was a recommendation back then when we had an athletic order. They said that we should have it periodically, so. But I know it was done around the same time.
All right, so we'll put this on our agenda for our next meeting and have some supporting documentation included in the packet so that we all can make an informed decision.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dean. Does anybody else have anything under new or old business? Okay, I'm happy to know.
Just one, one, one last thing through, through, through you to the superintendent. So one of the questions, and I think it was brought up earlier tonight, is, do we have some sort of a compass on how many students will be returning back to school? I know that at the Center for Excellence, there was a mention about how many students might be coming back. Do we know overall, I, I don't mean particularly each school, but just the general overall feel for how many students are coming back?
Yes, so the timeliness of parent conferences pretty much reassured our numbers. The majority of people are staying with the choice that they made back when they went hybrid or remote. We've had a few transfer over in both directions, which is a great thing, but I do wanna encourage more and more parents to come into the building if they can. We'd love, we wanna see students, we believe in in-person learning. We're, we're 50/50, but we're going towards the 60% staying remote at this point, so we had realigned staff. The high school has been reaching out to parents and trying to figure out who, who wants to stay home and putting, making sure their master plan is going to work. So we have, we have a great sense of who's home and who's in.
Thank you. Just speaking at the, about the schools, just a little shout out to the custodial staff. I had occasion to be in the high school, and again, I only was from the flagpole. I had occasion to be in the high school, and again, I only was from the flagpole entrance into the gym. But it is, the floors are sparkling, and I've never seen it looking so clean and pristine. So I know folks have been working really, really hard. So just a shout out to that, the building really looked in wonderful shape. All right, if we have nothing else under new or old business, we do need to enter executive session. I need someone to make a motion under chapter thirty-nine to go into executive session for contract negotiations, and then a second, and then I will do a voice vote.
Eileen, just to clarify, are we returning after executive session?
No, no, we're not. Sorry, and that should be part of the vote, motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I will make a motion to go into executive session, and we will not be returning afterward.
Okay, and it's under chapter thirty-nine for contract negotiations. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Ron, it's gonna be a voice vote. Brandon?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
Ron?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay, and for folks to know that we will be ending our Zoom, and the executive session, obviously, is just for school committee members, and that's on Google Meet. So we're gonna be closing this down and opening up on our other platform, just for everyone to be aware of. All right, thank you very much, everyone, and we will not be returning. So we will see the general public at our next meeting. Thank you.